All right, it's seven o'clock. It's time to call this meeting to order. Everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Taylor, if you'd lead us in tonight's opening prayer.
Dear Lord, please allow us to have the strength and the courage to make the decisions necessary for the common good of our city and for the residents that live within. In your closing prayer, I'm going to...
Let's have a call roll, please.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Sherman?
Here.
Mr. Dunphy?
Here.
Mr. Grant?
Here.
Mr. Booth?
Here.
Motion to excuse Mr. Smith.
Second. Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Has everybody had a chance to review the meetings from the last regular meeting?
Motion to approve. Perceived.
Second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Auditor slash treasurer's report. Mr. Saffington, if you would.
I'm up. I want to start with the treasurer's report presented by Mr. or prepared by Mr. Malane. The first page is just the actual cash balances of our different investments and checking accounts on September 30th, 2020, coming up to 2.411 million, roughly. The next page is the record of investments. This includes the money markets, money market account as well as different CDs. You'll notice it looks like this is presented a little different than before unless I just didn't notice the change. That's the two old CDs from beginning of the year where our interest was, what's that, 100 times higher, something, the interest was way down. And the two bottom ones are our current CDs at People's Bank, bringing us to date interest of $31,306.81. And just noticed the interest change between those two CDs before and the two we have. So 29,000 down to about 1,600 with the newer ones. So expect that going forward unless the Fed changes their minds about the economy. This is just reconciliation. On the next page with the beginning, bank balance, payroll payments, deductions, checks, all kinds of different things going on here. Water revenues, tax payments, outstanding checks for accounts payable, workers' comp, et cetera, et cetera. Next page, page two of his reconciliation, which is our last page, you'll see outstanding checks. And at the bottom, reconciled balance, which basically the very last number on the very last page is zero dollars difference between the bank account and the book balance.
Wow.
Between myself and Mr. Malane. He got his treasurer's report to completely balance to the penny. And I got my reconciliation, which I presented to council a few weeks ago, to balance to the penny. And we actually both had mistakes, but separate mistakes that we found for each other and got us to that zero. So the system, in the first month, we did the system the way the state asked us to. In a long time, it worked exactly how it's supposed to.
Good.
Pretty happy about that. So next is the blue pages, the auditor's report for September. I changed up a couple of things here you'll notice, but I actually went for simplifications. Hopefully, this is easier for everybody. First page just how did our fund balance has changed. This is all based on information on the next page, the full report of all of our funds, their increases, decreases, and ending balances. Let's see, for the first time in many months this year, the city brought in more revenue than it spent in expenditures. This, some of this is due to several one-time instances of state assistance, bringing the general fund to a higher balance. If you look at the CARES Act Fund, which is Fund 920, the city manager has done a really good job with all the department heads spending that money quickly and efficiently as that money has a deadline or we have to give it back. We spent $314,580.38 less than we brought in in the month of September. So reverses, we brought in that amount more than we spent. So the next is just the general fund, I'm sorry, the fund balances that those statements were based on. I'm not sure, other than month-to-date increases, 1.362 million, month-to-date decreases, 1.047 million. Pretty busy month, a lot of that. Our typical monthly expenditures are not in the millions, so Stan Tech and the sewer plant project probably are huge chunks of that, as you can see here on the report. And anyway, next page is our funds healthy. You'll see this page pretty much as long as I'm the elected auditor here. General fund sitting at about one-third of its healthy balance, which is better than we began this year. Street funds combined is in the vicinity of healthy. Parks is too low, capital too low. Water is in the vicinity and sewer is within a year of a healthy balance, I'd say, but not quite there. Next page is just expense and revenue reports. If you'd like to see each fund's month-to-date expenses, year-to-date expenses, month-to-date revenues, year-to-date revenues, you can see that here. I'm not sure there's extremely notable information here at the moment, nothing that sticks out to mind today. The next page is just a quick explainer on the general fund. So it's titled, "Let's Talk General Fund," because the general fund went into October with a higher balance than it has most of the year. As I mentioned earlier, that is due to some one-time assistance, but also some helpful income tax revenues, despite the slowdown. My guess is this is some catch-up revenue. This is some folks who, or businesses or individuals, who probably should have been filing and either didn't know where we're complying but are now. And that's filling the gap that we otherwise would have lost this year as the economy kind of ground to a halt. I don't know, it's really kind of hard to tell with the record-keeping that we have from the past. But I did want to caution council that though the general fund has increased so far this year, particularly in September, this only brings us back to like 2017 as far as general fund balance. Its highest balance was back in 2008, 2009. So we're still almost a decade from where the general fund used to be. If council's goal was to eventually get us to a place where we had the type of money where we can do major expansions and services or projects or et cetera. So I did just want to say continued vigilance on keeping expenses down and new revenues going forward will probably be required for the general funds. My final items today are that I was unable to complete the credit card report, so I apologize and I will get that done for the next auditor's report. Water abatement information is going out to residents within, what's today, the 26th, within about 10 days. So please be looking for that. If you've experienced a water leak in the city of Nelsonville, which has got to be about 60% of the people listening, the water abatement program will save you $470 to the dollar in the future. For the cost of $30, it saves you $500. So pretty good program. And then just that audits are continuing on several major fronts, including investigative. I got a long list of requests from the investigative unit Friday. And for residents at home, you can forward counsel, you can find this report online at the City of Nelsonville webpage at the auditor's tab. Any questions? I know that was quick.
They're kind of stunned. Anyway. Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Just to clarify, we did approve both of them?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We are moving on to mayor's court report and roll call. Mayor's court report.
The mayor's court report last month, so we're still waiting on the program so we can generate all these reports. We calculated all of it last month. We brought in about, pretty close to $6,500, it looks. This month, we'll be close to that again, I think. Got a full docket for Wednesday night. But as soon as we get that program in place, we'll be able to, because we also get it reported to the state. And it hasn't been done since June.
Okay. Is there any citizens' comments out there? Citizen comment, Liam?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. We have business and organizational comments. Chris Schmeele is going to call in.
I haven't heard back from him. I'm sending the link later around 4:35, but still no contact.
Okay. All right. Committee and committee discussion. Any committee meetings happen?
Yeah, police and fire. We discussed the 911 pager from the fire department, the marks pagers. We also discussed police department, what did we discuss? Something minor.
Do you have what, is there anything?
Yeah, I can't remember. It's all online. And then we talked to code enforcement about adopting the International Property Maintenance Code, which as soon as Mr. Hunter can get a copy of that and the ordinance wrote up, it'll be dropped for council.
All right.
We got one comment from the public in relation to that. Vicky McDonald wants to know when the civil service test for the chief of police is scheduled. You'll see that coming out tomorrow, Vicky. I finalized the physician description this afternoon and gave it back to Becky. And I believe, do you remember what day we tested?
The eighth, ninth, and 10th is the three days. The fire department, I think, is the first. I think the police chief's test the ninth and then patrolment test is the 10th.
Okay.
Yeah.
So everybody's scheduled, all that'll be released, fire stuff's already been released, if I recall correctly, and the police stuff will be released tomorrow.
That's December or November?
Yes.
And then we are moving on to the police department update. Chief Bitch, before's yours.
Well, we'll start off with the civil service exam.
All right.
Just stole my thunder there. We did finally get that scheduled. Again, I think the fire departments is going to be December 8th. The chief of police test is the 9th and then the 10th is the police officer test. So we've got that, I think it does, it's supposed to come out tomorrow. I'm not, I can't remember the exactual deadline for that to close, but again, we'll be reviewing all those as they come in. Recently, we just qualified, our department qualified with semi-automatic carbine rifles, shotguns, and handguns. We did our annual qualification. Some of them was elapsing and was a little behind. We're going to try to make sure that's more of a bi-annual or quarterly thing as opposed to the state minimum, which is once a year. I want to have more firearms training, if you will. But there also have been assigned 11 different training sessions for liability reduction, search and seizures, Narcan drug investments. The guys have to have those done by the end of the month. So I'm waiting, they're kind of trickling in, the guys are doing those periodically throughout their shifts here and there. Working with the city manager on the CARES Act, possibly get some new lockers for the locker room. Anybody that's been in there knows that it's kind of, you know, kind of beat up in there a little bit. And the guys are kind of excited about that. Been working strongly, a lot with code enforcement, Becky. We're going, boarding up a lot of houses. Right now, one of the issues we're having around the city is with the weather becoming a little more inclement and colder weather setting in, the homeless contingent, working on them a little bit. Unfortunately, none of them, they're all offered alternatives. Even, I'm even offered to give them rides to different, some of them treatment, some of them just a shelter, none of which will accept anything. I've offered that to 30, 40, 50 maybe, and not one person has offered to accept any help. Either or, whether it be rehabilitative for drug substance abuse or for any kind of shelter. We have been working with the city manager. We went over that today, got the budget as far as what him and I have decided. It's kind of been finalized in that sense to present, I believe, to council when the time is ready. The police clerk's working out beautifully. She's really saving a lot of time as far as the officers, they're able to go out there and just basically patrol, which has increased proactivity on their part. She's helping me. We're redoing the complete policy and procedure manual. It hasn't been updated for a lot of years. I've implemented a lot of new policies that we just didn't have policies to cover. So we're going to try to get that all nice and neatly done and have new policies up to date, a little more modernized comparatively to what we currently have right now, because we are definitely deficient in that area, in my opinion. Again, what Dan spoke of, you know, I think we're keeping mayor's court pretty hopping with a lot of things. We're also, you know, still got charges going to prosecutor's office and municipal court. We're also, the clerk, I should have said, she's also assisting with like the sealed records. I'd say we get one or two of those requests a day to seal somebody's record or a background check, a lot of time with Department of Defense, where they have somebody that's applied for the government, that has either lived here, went to college here or something. We got to do those. She's helping me with those. So between her and I, we're getting those knocked out pretty quickly. And she's also doing like the backgrounds, you know, sending those off to the governmental entities and things of that nature. So she's paying a great dividend. She's working out well, she's getting along well with everybody. Just a really nice addition, really helps makes things run a lot smoother. One of the things, and again, this is just, when I put, as you can see on the board, the year-to-dates, this just started October 1st. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention, so as you know, moving forward, kind of what you can have to look at and make any suggestions to critique it. It's just kind of some colored graph charts that we've made up here. And the things that we're listing is like, this one, this particular one here is, these are the arrests that we wasn't able to jail due to the jail being at capacity, refusing to accept them. These are the criminal arrests we have on the, as far as our active investigations. The next line is warrant arrest, traffic tickets, and parking tickets. He'll turn this over. We also got another page where we're tracking the amount of people that gets blue slipped, that's required to get, we have mentally evaluated, we transport to Athens, the year-to-date reports, criminal reports, and then the year-to-date for calls for service. In the first three weeks of this month, we've got 607 calls for service, so we're averaging about, given or, we're averaging about 25, 26 calls for service a day. We get a lot more calls from that, but these are the actual calls where we're required to go out, respond, help citizens, have interaction, things like that. So, you know, 25 or 26 a day is, you know, that's, I mean, that stays pretty busy. I mean, obviously, especially since midnight, we don't have that type of activity. So days and afternoons, we're staying a lot busier than what, at least from my indication, the records in past has said. A lot of people is telling us that they're calling where in the past they didn't call for one reason or another. So our call volume has increased. So our workload's increased. I don't look at it as necessarily a negative thing. It's just the facts of the way it is. Our call volume has increased for where we actually document reports and our calls for service. So I'm assuming that trend will continue to spiral maybe upward and ascend, I'm not sure. But right now, this will be a good way for us to monitor and track that throughout the year and then beginning new throughout the year. It's also something I posted in the office, so the officers kind of know what their productivity is, what areas they are. And I try to meet with them at least monthly and we go over what they're doing, what they need to work on, any complaints, any suggestions, anything like that, because we all have, you know, I want them to have a lot of input as well. And collectively, I think we all come to a lot of the same conclusions. There's some things that we obviously, we really need to work on, but I'm pleased with the progress we've made to get us up to a basic law enforcement agency. We're in full compliance now with our leads. We're in compliance with the Oleg computer system. We're in compliance with all of our training. Those are things that, and with the High Peace Officer Training Academy, these are all areas that we was deficient in and wasn't in compliance with the state recommendations and standards, but we are all up to date on those. So I'm excited about moving to the next level, once we get this a little bit more secure. I wanted to talk about K-9, Chris and Attila moving forward. I talked to the handlers and the trainers at least once a week, if not twice a week, plus the lieutenant that's in charge of that. I get a weekly evaluation on Chris and the K-9, as well as just an overall general synopsis of what they've been working on, progress, things like that. Before the graduation or certification state place, I plan on making a trip down there. I know all these people, I've known them for many years, so it's just one of those things I'd like to go down this to support Chris in that regard, but everything seems to be going really well. This is week six, I believe, maybe week seven? I've kind of lost track now. I think it's week seven. So if all goes well, this will be four more weeks, he'll be back in town, ready to go. So I'm excited about that. We're running a little shorthanded. We have a part-time officer that is still under medical leave. We have a full-time officer that's on medical leave, and then we have Chris that's full-time out in training. So it's been a little, we've been a little light staffed lately, but, you know, we're surviving, we're doing okay, and we're moving forward.
Good deal. Okay, Sonny. Do you have a question?
No, I should thank you.
So, we're going to start training Narcan then, once we get trained?
Yes. One of the, one of the serieses that I have is on Narcan and the applications of it, the pros, the cons, and everything in between. I spoke with the health department. We're going down, it actually just came in. We're going down, I remember one of the guys who down first thing in the morning and picking it up. We're going to have it at our disposal. It's my understanding that there's been some, I'm going to say controversy over whether or not officers should or shouldn't carry it. I've worked narcotics for a long time and I don't understand why any officer wouldn't want to have it readily at their disposal for many, many reasons. Number one, you have an opportunity to save a life. Two, you know, what if a small child or somebody, you know, gets exposed or a fellow officer? You know, they're just, I don't see a reason not to. So we're going to, we're going to definitely start, hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we're going to have, not only have Narcan readily available, but it's going to be assigned to each officer. And then as we, the health department, free of charge, will replace any that we use. So they've been great to work with. I haven't met, you know, any resistance with the officers, but it really wasn't an option either. So I guess it was just kind of something that I thought we should do.
Well, we certainly appreciate that. So also, I want to ask you a question then is, so with all these refusals from the regional jail, I could use some help with regulations, because I'd like to put a budget number together for a city jail back in the old water department building to retrofit that. So if you can get me some regulations, what we need to follow, I could put a budget number together, because I'd also like to see what for branch are out there and then, you know, if at all possible means COVID, that would be a way to add as well.
I mean, I definitely can ask them. There's a lot of departments with smaller jails, smaller facilities. You know, the state's very stringent and strict on the requirements and the, you know, everything from the decimal level and the thickness of walls to the, I mean, some things it's just, it's very stringent on. But yes, I can certainly not only get a list of what we need, but again, ballpark on what some of the costs are, and then maybe then you can put together the materials or things like that, but I can get that.
Yeah, I could, because I'd like to see what that would run, Russ, because that's definitely a need, for sure.
There's a lot, we've been utilizing the holding cell at the police department as much as we possibly can. We're using it, you know, to detain people for a reasonable amount of time until we can make arrangements to get them somewhere. I'm still, I've housed on a few occasions where officers has been assaulted or attempted to have been assaulted, or anytime I found a jail for them, so it's kind of, we went out of our way to take them to another facility out of the county. But I just feel very strongly that in order to support the officers, that anytime they're assaulted, that person needs to go to jail, because many, many of the people, they'll just look at us and tell us, hey, I've got two warrants, or I did this, you can't, you're not going to take me to jail, because we know the jail won't accept us for that. And especially females, they're all like, you can't find a place for me. So you can threaten me all you want with going to jail, I know you're not going to take me. So, you know, there's times where I have, just because of the circumstances, has warranted it. I don't plan on making it a practice, but when officers get assaulted, physically assaulted or attempted to, I think that it's, we have to set a precedent there and not let these people continue to go, you know, walk around town and tell everybody what they was able to get away with.
I agree. So I've got a question on the homeless folks you were talking about before you're fifty, spoken to. Are these local people or how did they get here?
Well, there's, there seems to be two factions of these people. A lot of them are, I'd say a third of them are originally Nelsonville residents. Then probably if you go to the outer lying area, we'll say within 30 minutes of here, they came to Nelsonville primarily, according to them, was for drug reasons, because drugs were relatively plentiful. And then you've got this other third that is, was locked up in the regional jail and they walked down the hill and they take the $10 they had in their pocket and they walk into a local meth house and get high and then they don't, they're stuck here. So there's a fairly unique dynamic that I never anticipated, that I just wasn't, I just never really thought about, to be honest with you. And I've tried to make arrangements, bring them in, get them something to drink, buy them something to eat, whatever I do to get them home, because, you know, regional jail houses five counties, there's people from Benton and Perry and, you know, Mel, Morgan. And I've tried to do everything above and beyond to get them, I don't want to say it, but just get them out of here. Because the homeless population that we have here in town, I'm empathetic to their situation. However, the ones that I've encountered, I will say the overwhelming majority are drug-dependent. They're committing a lot of our theft crimes, our vandalism, our damages. These aren't just strictly homeless people. Now, I know the dynamics vary from city to city, but what I've experienced here in town, so when I talk negatively or disparaging about the homeless, I don't mean it just because they're homeless. It's their activities that I don't think we need here in Nelsonville. And that's why I tried everything I could to give them help. I will continue to do so, but I've yet to be taken up on one time. Everybody, well, I'll call you when I, maybe in a day or two, or nobody's ever called back. You know, I've offered to take them right now, because I think it's well worth the trip to Athens or to Logan for an officer or me to take them somewhere to potentially get them help as opposed to letting them to continue throughout the town, and they just won't take me up on it. And many of them have warrants, many of them we arrest, and many of them are out, you know, if they are accepted, they're out the next day. So it's kind of like a revolving wheel. So that's not really, that's not going to, that's not going to be an effective solution for us. I'm open to ideas. I'd love to have some. I don't know exactly what exactly it is we can do, but I know that it's, it's going to get worse. We're trying to be very vigilant with the businesses. We've already had some break-ins, vandalism, some thefts, things like that. And sadly enough, I anticipate that to continue on, just because of the weather and the time of the year and things of that nature.
Chief, the, we have, that, as you mentioned, the regional jails, five counties, that have folks there, they, they get there from coming, probably one of their officers brings them here, drops them off. Is there any way to have them take them back home when they are being released? I mean, is there any way, I mean, I get it, I understand it's their time and they're paying for that, but, you know, at the end of the day, these are folks that are potentially residents of their county and being released into our community, and this definitely has been part of our problem.
Right. I mean, it's, it's possible. I mean, they can, they can certainly do that. I just, I don't know how, I mean, you know, because you take, I'm just using Morgan and Perry County for example, you know, obviously there, that's always a way. Perry County, for example, you know, obviously there, that's always a way, and they're limited on, on, you know, staffing and things of that nature is what it is. So it's sometimes all they can do to get them over here. I would, I would think it would be extremely difficult to get, I mean, I, I know all the sheriffs pretty well, but I know what they're gonna say. I mean, they're gonna say that, you know, I have one guy out for shift, and if I do that, then I gotta call a guy in for overtime, and, you know, and I can, I, I understand the issues that they're having. But unfortunately, I don't think a lot of them realize what, where that leaves us.
That's, that's been presented to the commission at least two or three times, and they've turned it down every time. I think they take the position that they're released from up there and they don't have any more authority over them. It has been, it's been discussed several times.
Maybe someone from, from the, that's employed by the prison, potentially transport them, you know, a possibility, you think?
The, the jail, it's not a prison, it's a jail, the jail doesn't have that personality, doesn't have that kind of personality.
What if each, each of the five counties kicked into a little cough or?
Yeah. I can tell you one thing, Morgan and Benton County, I'll tell you right now, the last time I knew, had very, very, very small carryovers, like less than a hundred thousand dollar carryover, so they struggle to meet their obligations to the jail. Yeah, I just have this feeling that if this was happening in Athens, and they were walking down Willno U and camping out Willno U campus, I bet something would get done. I mean that nicely, but I'm frustrated here too. I know that I get approached all the time by citizens asking why this happens, and, you know, everybody needs to understand that where, you know, there's not really anything that anyone can do, that's just the way the rules are. And Chief, I'd be glad to give them a ride anywhere. So any time you got one that needs a ride home and you don't have anybody, call me, I'll take them.
They're very, they're very reluctant to accept a ride. I mean, and I tell them, you get the back of the police car, but this time you actually get out, I'll take you somewhere, we can also, and they will, you know, if it was to Athens, I think that's time well spent, if they have a place to stay, but they just.
Well, I, I know that they also, my sister owns a small business in town, and at least once a week, somebody walks from the jail and stops at her place of business and asks to use the phone and, or like a dollar to, you know, or she'll let them use the phone to call for a ride.
Your dad used to do that.
My dad used to do this too, give them a dollar or two to go up to McDonald's and get a drink and wait for their ride there, because they are literally released from the jail with nothing. I think they take all their money and then they mail them a check later.
I, I've given several dollars, because it's a dollar bus ride to Athens. People, it's like, I let them use my cellphone or made a call for them, and I've given them a dollar and showed them where the bus stop was, just to try to help them get closer back to where they was at. But again, those are just the ones from Athens.
Right.
You know, the other ones, there's, I don't, you know, unfortunately.
I think it's the same thing, right? You get arrested, you go into jail and want your wearing.
Right.
Right, they get released in the dead of winter with no coat, with like health slippers on, and pajamas.
Whatever you're arrested for then.
And a dead cell phone.
And, yeah, I mean, it, it is a problem.
It is, yes.
And I think that the county commissioners and the counties who are participating in the regional jail, you know, need to go to the table and, and try to come up with a solution to help these people out.
Right. Help our community out.
Yeah, it should not be Nelsonville.
It's Nelsonville taking the hit again.
Shouldn't shoulder the burden for it.
Because again, many of them, and I'm not telling you folks anything, many of them is drug dependent, and the first thing, depending on the length of time they've been in jail, the first thing they want is, is an addict, I mean, we all know they want a fix. So they find somebody, or they've met somebody in jail, or somebody's somehow local, they end up finding that fix, and then they just, they're here. And, and that, then that becomes an issue, because then normally what follows is some type of criminal activity. So yeah, it's, it's definitely a vicious cycle. I just, I'm, I'm open to suggestions on how we can fix it.
Well, I think the only, the good news is with you in place and the officers we have now, we're dealing with that criminal element with the drug houses and drugs being in our town, and that hopefully they're gonna realize that in order to get that, that they're gonna have to leave Nelsonville with it.
Well, I mean, I want, and I take this how you want, I'm trying everything I can to make them feel as uncomfortable here as possible, because if you're here, and no matter who you are, if you're here just to commit crimes and deprive us of resources, you need to go. And that's just the way I feel about it. You know, if you're not bringing something to the community, then you need to go. And that may be controversial, but I don't know how else to say it. We, we all understand there's a problem, the only way we can fix it is to take a proactive approach to it, you know?
Well, yeah, for, for way too long, we've just turned a blind eye, made it way too easy for them to come down here and do whatever the hell they want. But under your leadership, I can see a big change so far.
We've got a long way to go.
We'll get there. I'll put my mask back on, Mr. Dumpy, I think, yeah.
We've got some questions from the crowd.
All right, go ahead.
First one is, Mr. Greg Clement wants to know, will the new mayor's court software reflect expenses as well as revenue?
Yes.
Okay. Nikki McDonald asked, is it possible to have space at the old prison?
Well, the prison is not open right now.
Right, the old prison is, it's being developed into the Aslechon Recovery Project, which will be a women's facility, recovery.
I think all that has been placed on hold.
But it's also because of COVID and some other issues.
It's state-owned, and it's in Hocken County?
Yeah.
Yep, there it is.
However, it will help us though when they do open.
When they do open.
When they do open, right, they've got money from the Appalachian Regional Commission and all that, and it will help female addicts and female inmates, or, you know.
And they'll free up the beds that we currently have been.
Yeah, that's my understanding, so I'm, I'm, I'll be happy for that.
But it's just on hold.
Okay, nice, so, but a lot of them, where I heard it was.
We're going with forty bed addition up here.
Yeah, per bed, eighteen or nineteen.
Yeah, he's moving back.
So we've got two more. Miss Missy Clement wants to know if holding, if a holding jail or center is built, will bids be taken from qualified construction companies for this build? And I would, I would say yes, Missy, anything over fifty thousand dollars, which this will go way over that, will have to be sent out for bid. However, the extent of my research so far consists of Google, and they make modular units, already pre-assembled that meet all the requirements that we could potentially, and I don't know if this is the way, this is the answer, but can potentially put inside on site, and then you just have to plum them in and.
Be done.
Put electric to them. But that's just one idea. Then, Mr. Johnny Flowers wants to know, does the jail notify PD when they're releasing an inmate?
No.
Okay, and then Miss Lois McDonald said she heard Regional is privately owned, and that's why many of the criminals are released, because there's no room.
It's not privately owned.
No.
Done by five counties, five counties.
It's a partnership with five counties.
Okay. That's it.
All right. Well, thank you, Chief Fitch, for the informative report. I'll find you something. If we could, we're gonna move on to a, is that the second reading? If I don't, now this, it went back to first reading. Send me on to, oh, wait a minute, I got them out of order. Okay. Yep, there it is. All right. Order at seventy-nine dash twenty, it's for second reading.
And we're not commending the 2020.
I have a question before you start, Susan. I'd sent an email Thursday to the Finance Committee that some of the numbers required could change, did you guys want to amend those amounts? One of them is for the water project ongoing, that we're setting aside sixteen thousand for, but the invoices are starting to get much larger. Or did you want to wait till the next council meeting? I just wanted to ask before you start, read it all the way through and then.
We can wait till the next, let me just wait.
Yeah, it's kind of the finance and the best.
So I make sure. All right.
And we're not commending the 2020 appropriations ordinance to appropriate from the unappropriated balance, the following, the sum of eight thousand five hundred dollars from General Fund Number 100 to line item number 100 dash 370 dash 21100, contract services. Eight thousand five hundred dollars from Water Fund Number 700 to line item number 700 dash 370 dash 21100, contract services. Eight thousand five hundred dollars from Sewer Fund Number 750 to line item number 750 dash 370 dash 21100, contract services. Sixteen thousand dollars from Water Fund Number 700 to line item number 700 dash 730 dash 80080, water upgrade projects. One thousand two hundred dollars from the General Fund Number 100 to line item number 100 dash 200 dash 40010, operating. Five hundred dollars from General Fund Number 100 to line item number 100 dash 625 dash 90010, indigent expenses. One thousand five hundred dollars from General Fund Number 100 to line item number 100 dash 200 dash 40010, operating. Seven thousand dollars from General Fund Number 100 to line item number 100 dash 100 dash 70010, body cameras. Thirteen thousand dollars from Mayor's Court Computer Fund Number 910 to line item number 910 dash 900 dash 60010, equipment rents or leases. Decrease the appropriations as follows, twelve hundred dollars from General Fund Line Item Number 100 dash 200 dash 30010, and fifteen hundred dollars from General Fund Number, Fund Line Item Number 100 dash 200 dash 50013, fuel. Whereas, the appropriations ordinance needs to be amended to appropriate money for various needs. Now therefore being ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, follows.
You don't need to read one.
Thank you. The total appropriations are decreased by set amount and increased by set amount. This ordinance shall become effective at the earliest date provided by law, going active by council on second meeting, the twenty-sixth day of October, 2020.
Any council discussion on this?
Let's do it now.
So I got that?
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
This, this ordinance needs to come off the table first, and then we amend it and go back to first reading.
Move into, this is first reading sixty-seven twenty, correct?
Yes, it knew it from the table, motion on the table.
Motion.
Motion.
It knew it from the table.
Second. Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
And then, Elizabeth, you need to make a motion to amend this, that's written.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to amend the ordinance that's written.
Which adds the new exemption.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Then it needs to be read for first reading.
It's nice and long.
I can't see me.
We should introduce it.
Oh, introduce it? Oh, all right. All right. And we're not adopting Nelsonville City Code Sections 9.18.10, 9.18.99, 9.17.051, vacant property fees, penalties, and exemptions. Whereas, the Nelsonville Planning Commission recommended on August nineteenth, 2020, the adoption of Nelsonville City Code Sections 9.18.01, 9.18.99, 9.17.051, vacant property fees, penalties, and exemptions. Now therefore being ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the Nelsonville City Code shall be amended effective January first, 2021, to adopt the following. 9.18.01, vacant property fees. The fees described in this section are established in order to defray the cost to the city government and community as a whole related to the health, safety, and economic impacts of structures which remain vacant for long periods of time, including but not limited to administrative costs for registering and processing the vacant building owner registration form, and for the costs incurred by the city in monitoring the vacant building site. The fees are also structured in order to provide appropriate incentives for owners of vacant buildings to care for them properly, seek to fill them, and in appropriate cases, demolish them. The annually increased fee amounts are intended to absorb the costs incurred by the city for demolition and hazard abatement of or repairs to vacant buildings, as well as the continued normal administrative costs stated above. A, the owner of a vacant building shall pay a fee of one hundred dollars with registration of a vacant property. For every consecutive year that the building remains vacant, an annual fee will be assessed at double the previous year's fee, for a maximum annual fee equaling the five-year fee of sixteen hundred dollars, to be used for the fifth and for all consecutive subsequent years of vacancy. B, the first annual fee shall be paid at the time the building is registered. If the owner successfully restores the building to occupy or demolishes it in accordance with the applicable city code during the year following registration, and there have been no violations associated with the property, the fee shall be refunded less than administrative charge equal to any cost the city has incurred. C, all fees shall be paid in full prior to the issuance of any zoning or demolition permits unless the property is granted an exception, exemption. D, all fees, including delinquent fees, shall be paid by the owner prior to any transfer of an ownership interest in the vacant building. Ame may be placed on the property to collect delinquent fees. Section 9.18.99, penalties. Absence of showing of good cause if a building is not registered within the timeframe required in Section B, or the registration is not renewed within thirty days after the expiration of one year from the date of the previous registration, a penalty shall be paid in addition to the annual registration fee. The penalty shall be equal to one-half of the current annual fee, or eight hundred dollars, whichever is left. Section 9.17.051, these are the exemptions. A, abandoned residential property pending foreclosure. B, properties that are part of an estate undergoing probate and not subject to bankruptcy, provided the administrator or executor of the estate resides in a contiguous county. C, rental properties actively being marketed for rental. D, a building which has sufficient fire damage or damage caused by extreme weather conditions shall be exempt from the registration requirement for a period of ninety days after the date of the fire or extreme weather event, if the property owner submits a request for exemption in writing to the code enforcement officer. This request shall include the names and addresses of the owner or owners, and a statement of intent to repair and reoccupy the building in an, in an expedient manner, or the intent to demolish the building. E, a building that is for sale, provided that the owner submits proof that it is listed in the MLS to the code enforcement officer. F, a single-family home or owner occupies two families dwelling, has been used as a residence for at least ninety days, or three months, in the last two hundred and seventy days, nine months, and the owner intends to resume living in the dwelling. G, a building under active construction, renovation, restoration, where a building plan has been submitted to the code enforcement officer, but no later than one year, three hundred and sixty-five days. H, any building that is owned by the landman. I, any owner of a vacant building may request an exemption for other reasons, for example, actively marketing as a rental, from the provisions of City Code Chapter 9.17, by filing a written application with the code enforcement officer. The applicant understands that the code officer shall consider the following. One, the applicant's prior record as it pertains to the City Housing Code, Building Code, or Property Maintenance Code violation. Two, the amount of vacant property the applicant currently has within the city, and three, the length of time that the building for which the exemption is sought has been vacant. Documentation required. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law, going active by city council on the second reading the twenty eighth day of. No. No, oh, that's.
The eleventh.
The eleventh. The ninth day of November.
Yes. They've got to start over now.
Oh, wow.
Wow.
I just want to look.
That's a timeout for you.
I know where he lives.
I do too. Can't miss him. I'll cruise him if he's walking by my house.
Oh, man. Mr. Hunter now does himself sometimes.
He's very scary.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Um, I just, I wanted to thank um. Uh, this has been in the works for quite a while. Um, and I do appreciate um it being tabled multiple times to really step through the process. And I really appreciate the work of Elizabeth and the planning commission and Becky.
Yeah.
All the work that they put into this and really making a really.
Exact and.
Really good legislation, I think.
Yes.
Appreciate all that effort and work on it.
Absolutely.
Okay, I forgot anybody I called down.
Any comments?
Yeah, he did.
Uh, don't worry about firmly on.
You guys are just holding up space, right?
I'll see you in the parking lot.
Okay.
I'll look my Saturday night.
Ordinance eighty dash twenty. This is. I need someone to introduce this, please.
I'll order your attention. Thank you. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute change order number five to upgrade the power equipment at the back street lift station and to provide bollards around the new generator at the Bulto lift station of the Nelsonville Regional Sewer Collection System and declaring an emergency. Whereas cost claims have been made by the contractor and approved by the project engineer in the amount of seven thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars. Change order five, number five. Whereas there are sufficient contingency funds in the Nelsonville City contract of the Phase One Regional Collection System to fund these change orders with the current financing. Now therefore being ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the city manager is authorized to execute change order number five for pump station trunk sewer of Phase One of the Nelsonville Regional Sewer Collection System for seven thousand one hundred ninety-seven dollars in accordance with Exhibit A attached heretofore incorporated herein by reference. This ordinance is being passed as an emergent to measure pursuant to higher revised code seven thirty-one point three because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary so that change order can be implemented as soon as possible during the construction project. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Going active by council on first reading under suspension of the rules. Twenty-sixth day of October two thousand twenty.
Any council discussion on this matter? You understand, everybody understand what is going. Okay. Motion to suspend. Thank you for the move.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant? Yes. Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Sherman?
Yes. You need to.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Yes. Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Okay, we are at the city manager's report. Scott, Mr. Frank, if you would take it.
You beg, good evening, everyone. I will start out with code. So we got some good news from the land bank. Uh, next month we have three houses that are going to be demoed. That's one eighty-nine Ashton, actually five. One seventy-one Asian, one ninety Critfield, and one eighty-nine Saint Johns. Uh, that last one's being done by a private individual. So those four are coming down next month, which is great news. And Becky got a few more houses boarded up last week. So we are in the process of securing different properties. And she's just doing a really good job over there with that. Uh, PD helps out quite a bit with that, and so does the utilities department. The rentals, so we started early with the rental registration. So far, we've had fifty-five registered, which is sixteen hundred and fifty dollars. But that's just a small drop in the bucket for what we have to come because last year was a thousand forty-five. So there should be a significant amount still coming. And this is a request-ish. So in fire committee, we had to talk about pagers.
Mm-hmm.
And we discussed the pagers. Uh, why we didn't have them in the past, we were holding out for a grant, the grant fell through, and now the need to get those pagers. The pagers take a two- to three-month lead time from the time you order them until the time that they actually get billed and arrive. So I just wanted to check with council if it was okay. I've already talked to Chief Barber, and it would be in his budget next year. It would come out of his capital next year. Uh, if we could, if anybody has any issues replacing the order now, the money will come out of his capital next year, not any more money. It's not asking for any special monies, it'll come out of just the general capital line.
We could discuss it first at the finance meeting planned to have on this week.
There you go. I don't have a problem with it, just let it go through finance and make sure everything's there and go from there.
Okay. Then, let's see. PD, so uh, I don't know how much you noticed the stats that he put up there, but our employee of the month for September was Officer Mount. Uh, he's been doing good things for us. His bars on the diagram are all the way up to the right, that's for this month, not including last month. He's just been a very productive police officer, doing a lot of good things out there on night shift, staying extremely busy. And we're just very grateful for the work he's put forth, and that's why he was our employee of the month for September.
Awesome.
Then we have Chestnut Street update. So Chestnut Street is still moving along. Uh, we, the new water line is in, and everybody's hooked up to the new water line. Um, I believe all the laterals are hooked up or in place to be hooked up at a later date. So the road is being constructed footback for asphalt. I made the decision to postpone the entire asphalt job until next year. So what that'll look like this year is the gravel we put down in place and a couple inches of asphalt will be down. If I recall correctly, the total thickness is either six or eight inches when we're done.
Six inches, three would go down.
Yeah, so we're going to put down half of it now and then the other half in the spring. The reason for doing so is if there's any settling over the winter or anything, uh, goddammit, when they put it back together and it starts leaking, this gives us the opportunity to go in there and fix it instead of cutting into a brand-new road.
And destroying it again.
And destroying it again. So the, the current plan, which we're having a meeting tomorrow to finalize everything is, what will be exposed out to there will be some manuals above, and we're going to section those off with cones and different markings to make sure that nobody runs into those. But then that'll be finished next spring for all the paving down.
I think that's a great idea.
Thank you.
Sorry, that's Scott. Do, are they, as they fill, backfill, or are they tamping any of that?
So they are compacting, they have a vibrating roller that they brought in last week. So they are rolling it now, braiding it now. And that's another reason for holding off on the asphalt too, just in case there's any settling over the winter. Uh, that'll all be repaired before we put our final coat on the top. I would really, really hate to put fresh asphalt on that road and then us have to dig it up next year because it's something settled. Uh, as we saw with the concrete in front of, I believe that's Kelly's. You know, that's all brand-new concrete, but that looks like one of the worst parts of the road, you know, where it's all collapsed down there. That's all settling that's happened underneath of it.
Yeah.
For different reasons. And that will be repaired too, just so everybody's tracking.
They're compacting that, are they bringing it up in lifts or are they just?
No, so.
It all.
No, so they've been compacting, tamping, uh, as they put it down, but it's not raised and lift because it goes basically from one hole to the next. Or the actual trench itself where the, uh, the, uh, new truck line went in, that was being compacted back in there when they put it in there. But now as they raise it up and they go dig down every service because they had to, they I hate to even guess how many times it's been dug up and refilled in the same spots. All the more reason that I'm terrified to asphalt it just because I am worried that compaction is an issue. And ideally it'll be fixed next year.
We got rid of all the cold slag we're using to better fill.
Yes. And we're putting down eight inches of rock before the asphalt? Yep. So eight inches, three or four. Three or four, and that'll all be compacted in as well. So that's Chestnut Street. Then, uh, the water grant that we got approved, uh, we've been doing a lot of work trying to get that in place for next year. Uh, that's going to do the all-new meters in Bulto and quite, almost all the meters in Nelsonville. Uh, we're working out some of the logistical stuff with our utility guys in conjunction with the grant itself. You know, one of the big issues we have is there's no shut-off between the existing meter and the main. And, uh, you know, that's not part of the grants, so how we're going to get after that and make that a part of is our challenge now, but we're still working through those details as we speak. The, uh, and then that project is Mill Street. Um, that's one, just to refresh everybody's memory, that's the one that we're going to do the sewer line in-house. So Jason is already working on his materials list to get everything ordered. And that way they can get started up there putting in the new sewer line down Mill Street.
Awesome.
The sewer grant. So we found out that we did not get the four point seven million dollar sewer grant that we submitted for. However, not necessarily a bad thing. Uh, as Mr. Betts can echo, we, when they, when they talked to us, everything about our project was right except for really one thing. Uh, and that is if we asked for less money, say three point five or three point seven versus the four, it, uh, would have put us over the edge to get the financing. This was actually a good thing in many ways because even if we would have got the grant to, uh, start putting in the sewer next year, we have nowhere to send the sewer to until the plant's done. So that's a bit of an issue. So this actually worked out to our benefit. Uh, we're already lined up. Uh, Mr. Betts is working on the engineering. So that way we are ready to execute as soon as they award it next year. Did I say that almost correctly?
Pretty much. The readiness to proceed is the other factor that we're really looking at now. And, um, uh, in order to get that readiness to proceed, we'll have to get design services underway. So we've done the preliminary planning Scott's referring to and have the S O S together. But, um, I'd recommend starting with the plan soon and we discussed in the utility committee meeting there or however you want to proceed the, those discussions.
Uh, is there any questions so far?
Nope.
This is totally out of the blue and definitely had anything to do with. What's this, the big rocks on the old BP slot? Did they dig that up?
We dug that up for you, just go pick it up in your car.
That was an old manhole for a pair of.
It is, it is, that's a, so we're going to attempt to help the contractor break it up. Right now it's too big to get rid of, so we have a jackhammer attachment for our skid steer that we're going to take down for them once we get caught up. Right now our guys have been down there pretty much all day, every day in lockstep with them. It's a full-on sprint between the contractors and the city workers to get this to the point where we can cover it up and put the road down. The challenge is asphalt plant shuts down on November ninth. So we have to get those three inches on the ground before November ninth. So our guys have been working very closely with them and still working very closely with them. So, uh, last thing I have is I received a letter that I would like to read counsel regarding the nine-one-one, it's just kind of a follow-up. It's from the, uh, it's from the prosecutor's office. They are the ones that represent county commissioners. And it's just addressed to myself. And the title or the subject is dispatching agreement between Nelsonville City and Athens County nine-one-one communications. Dear Mr. Frank, it appears there has been some confusion regarding the current contract between Nelsonville and Athens County regarding nine-one, regarding the nine-one-one dispatch, police dispatching agreement.
Please forgive me.
Say again? Roger. It is Athens County's understanding that Nelsonville has negotiated with Hawking College to provide Nelsonville with dispatching services to the Nelsonville Police Department. To clear up the confusion, Athens County views nine-one-one police dispatching agreement to still be valid, to still be a valid contract. Due to your communications with interim director Lieutenant Aaron Mater, Athens County will be standing by if needed for services, but understand that Hawking College is currently providing dispatching services of the city of Nelsonville. As requested, Athens County nine-one-one communications will continue to answer and transfer law enforcement nine-one-one emergency requests within your jurisdiction to Hawking College. This communication in no way impacts the current nine-one-one dispatching provided to your fire and EMS services. Athens County looks forward to continued relationship with Nelsonville and will assist as required by contract. And it says any questions to contact them. So, uh, and it's just one to clarify, we're still under contract. Uh, kind of like mentioned before, no harm, no foul, still in place. If it doesn't work out with Hawking College, we can go back to what we had.
Which is. Yeah, okay. See, you were right all along with it. Nice job. Thank you, Scott, for that.
Yes, sir.
You got anything else?
That's it, unless you folks have anything for me.
I'm good. And how about the fence in front of the park?
Right, so we found out during our, the good news is in the, the slow part. So we found out that when our insurance adjuster, Kater, not adjuster, but our insurance agent came in and did inspection on our facilities, that was a write-up, but she also brought it to my attention that we have insurance on that fence and that it would be much cheaper to pay the deductible instead of us fixing the fence out of pocket. So it's just a matter of coordinating. Jason has a couple quotes in the queue now, and as soon as we get those gathered up, we'll have a company come in and repair professionally, which is good because none of our guys are professional fence installers.
Yep. That's good. Excellent. Thank you. Thanks.
And the last thing, sorry, Mulligan. I know. November eighteenth, uh, we're going to have a citywide training day. What that'll include is from eight to five, our insurance company is going to come in, they're going to give us the, uh, sexual assault training, or not sexual assault, it's a harassment training, there you go. And, uh, thank you.
The thing that happens before.
They're also going to give us cyber training on phishing and very basic IT-type stuff. We have a couple other trainings lined up. So it'll be, uh, again, eight to noon as one, and then at noon we'll break out for lunch, and then every section is responsible to their unsexual training. Uh, everything will be recorded, so those folks who are not on duty will be able to watch the videos and get the exact same training all the rest of this guy.
Thank you very much.
And trick or treat?
Trick or treat. This Saturday, five thirty to seven. Uh, practice social distancing, wear your mask. Um, I do know there's going to be a couple organizations up on the square handing out candy. Uh, one church from out of town contacted us, so I know they'll be out there handing out candy and, uh, yeah, just use your social distancing and mask. That's all I can ask.
I've got a couple extra cruisers. Guys also going to be handing out candy as well as being on duty half an hour prior to half hour afterwards, just in case there's any issues. But just to be out there with the kids and stuff. So we'll have two on duty handling holes and then two actually out there passing out candy and milling them out.
Thank you. All right.
Um. So I think there's some questions up here, let me see. It says, does Nelsonville have to follow the ORC? Yes, I don't know which ORC you're talking about.
Who's that from?
Uh, Mr. McDonald, I'm not aware of any exemptions. Um.
There was one before that, I think.
Oh, is there? I can't see over there.
It's Johnny Flowers, if a property is rented for one month and is vacant for eleven months, do they pay a prorated fee? I think that would not make it property.
No.
No. If it's a rental, it's a rental.
Yeah. Johnny Mac.
Then Becky asked about follow the ORC.
Yeah, what's what has got there?
Thanks, Becky, for boarding up the Reeves' house on Poplar Street, a lot of
Unsavory.
Unsavory characters in and out. I'm sure the neighbors are happy.
That was very much a success story. There were two outside cheering.
Yeah. Wow.
Uh, I was down there last night and, uh, it's a much quieter neighborhood.
It's great. Moving forward. Until you got there.
Pretty much.
All right. Well, moving on to the good of the order, myself tonight. Just wanted to start by saying that everything in the city seems to be going forward at a pretty quick pace. Uh, I'd like to thank everybody for their combined help on making this project, making everything go forward. Like we have a great staff, a great, uh, great workers. I see them out constantly doing different tasks. different tasks every day, really good group of guys. And also, I'd like to express my, I want to say sorrow at the Nelsonville-York game. I know a lot of those kids on that team, I know a lot of the seniors, I just want to express my, I guess, sorrow, like I said, at the way that game turned out. I do know this, I do know that there's been several phone calls made to the Ohio, Ohio High School Athletic Association about it, and just really, they played a great game, keep your heads high, guys, things like that happen in life, hopefully it doesn't happen again to you, but you played a great game, I watched it via the stream. Mr. Grant?
Um, I'd like to follow up on what Tony said about the city workers, they're all doing just a great job, Kevin and I've seen, and, well, long time, really coming along, everything's going great, and also, please vote for the street lady.
Yes. I echo the same words about the city employees, the fire department, police, to, you know, the auditors, treasurer, city manager, you know, street water, all those fine men and women are doing a great job, and there's some momentum building in talent that we've not seen in a long time. Also, congratulations Lady Buckeyes volleyball team on winning the sectional championship, and play a good win tonight against Fort Adams, and vote for them, so, that's all I got.
Well, I also am going to commend our city employees, just so I'm not left out. No, no, everyone is doing a great job. Then I also just want to remind everyone, probably our least favorite time of the year, right, that we do change our clocks on Sunday, so don't forget that, we, we fall back, so I guess you gain an hour, but, after trick-or-treat, determine whether...
An extra hour to vote for the street lady. There it is. Extra hour to vote for the street lady.
It's called lurk, but okay.
Mr. Taylor?
All right, I got a book here. No. Um, I wanted to congratulate the Lady Buckeyes as well on their sectional, the sectional championship play, that's awesome. I also want to congratulate the Nelsonville Football Buckeyes as well, it was a great run for them, really, really proud of all those kids. We've got sixteen seniors that will be graduating this year, know most of them very closely. So, I just, again, echo what Tony was saying, keep your heads high, but I want to thank, I want to thank the cheerleaders for, and their moms for being there this whole season. Want to thank the, all the coaches and the coaching staff. I'd like to thank all the, like Heather Carter and her crew that put together the feeds every week for the kids, and all the, you know, businesses that donated food. Also like to thank all the senior moms who decorated the locker rooms every, every week, and, you know, they put in a lot of work and effort this season for those, those guys and those cheerleaders, and I want to thank the Edwards for getting a coach bus for the kids to take, I mean, it's a two-hour drive to Proctorville, so I want to appreciate them stepping up and helping us out with that, and the fire department for giving us a send-off. Don't know where the police department is, but, and I want to, from next county, I'm going to give them a break on this year.
Wow.
Wait, excuse I get us arresting people?
Yeah.
If you notice, his numbers were really low on as far as the tickets, you know, for tickets. Also, I want to thank, because that, that, that game ended, it was pretty tough, it was clear victory for our team, and it was kind of taken away from them, and we, we really received a lot of support from surrounding communities, teams, fans, parents, either than people outside the area that were live streaming, that I think would have faced our, the winner of our region in the next round, and, and I just appreciate the support from all, all of those people, so, but, but it was a great, great season, I'm proud of all those kids, and I appreciate, you know, everything that they've done for this community, so.
Anyone else you want to thank? Ricky Paul, if you have anything?
Um, Big Ben Jesus, thank you.
Maybe he, maybe Jesus. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
I'm just kidding, I'll probably get in trouble for this one, but...
Oh, here we go.
So, like it.
Where are you going to spend your cheap now?
Well, yeah, you don't mess with a guy who has a gun. So...
Start with Starburst first.
I would like to remind everybody, get out there and vote, vote for our street lady, vote for your local government. Also like to commend, I believe it's Robert in the water department, he's going to be coming up on his, I think, his twenty-eighth year here.
Wow.
You know, that's, that's quite an achievement there, so.
Thank you.
And then, we are still looking for a city council clerk, I know that Josh had posted, this Harvey here has been so gracious to...
Yes.
To help us for this long, but...
She's getting tired, people.
She's looking to, to move on, but...
I heard if we allow her to drink wine during the council meetings, she'll stay outdoors.
She wasn't already? I can't, I can't prove that. Time out, Taylor.
Okay, that's all, that's all I have. Also, I want to thank the city workers out there, police department, fire department, code enforcement, and the water and street department, utility department.
Sorry, Becky.
That's all I got.
All right. We have a motion, we need to go into executive session for Ohio revised code one-twenty-one dash twenty-two for personal and legal matters.
Personal.
Personal.
Whatever.
Who are we inviting there, Mr. Doug?
We're inviting Mr. Hunter.
I believe that's it. Do you need the city manager? I don't know, I believe that's it. I don't know. You put it on there? I can put it on there, I can...
Okay, we don't need a good one there. Oh, twice that, okay, never mind, we do not need to go into executive session. How about a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Thank you.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.